Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order January 20th PCBA meeting at 7:00 PM. General, please.
Chairman Kempa.
Here.
Commissioner DeGraff.
Here.
Commissioner Patel.
Here.
Commissioner Seaworth.
Here.
Commissioner Reigel is absent by prior notice. Commissioner Simmons is absent by prior notice. Commissioner Mieszewski.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Perfect. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first item is the approval of minutes from the November 20th meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes as presented? If there are none, can I please have a motion to approve November 20th PCBA meeting at 7:01?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
One.
All right, our first item of business is continuation of PCBA case number 24-13V. It's a public hearing for a corner yard variation. The applicant is Michelangelo Monterosa at 1 East Willow Road in Prospect Heights. And the applicant is seeking to amend the approval conditions of variation ordinance number 008-33 to increase the height of the fence from 4'6" to 6 feet and change the material from cedar to solid vinyl and maintain the approved 25-foot corner yard setback encroachment per section 53-4H1F2 of the City of Prospect Heights zoning code. Can I please have a motion to reopen case number 24-13V at 7:02?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Can we do one or...
It needs to be a roll call.
Roll call, please, Jen.
Commissioner DeGraff.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
Aye.
Commissioner Seaworth.
Aye.
And Chairman Kempa.
See the applicant here? He has already been sworn in, we don't have to swear.
That is correct. If there's anybody else who is here to speak on this, this would be a more appropriate question.
All right, so if there's anybody else to speak to the case, I can swear you in at this time.
Not this case.
Oh, not this case, well, here.
No. Wait, yeah. Hello, if you could, please state your name and address for the record.
Sure, Michelangelo Monterosa, 1 East Willow Road, Prospect Heights.
And can you...so we were meeting again, same case. We've asked for additional evidence. I don't know if you want to...there's anything that Director Peterson, you want to tell us first or...
The meeting was continued for the applicant to provide additional details to support the request of the variations and also to investigate an alternative colors to the potential fence that he was out there. He did submit a revised site plan plat showing locations and then also a brochure highlighting various colors that could potentially be used. He did advise that he may bring samples tonight.
I did bring them as well, so...
When you get to that point, then you can bring them.
Sure, sure.
All right, thank you. The floor is yours, sir.
All right, thank you. So, in the last meeting, we discussed a few things that were the hurdles that we decided to do a continuation for. The first being the color being the issue of the fence, and I think initially, the color chosen was white, just because that was the cheapest option. Since then, I brought all the other colors available from the contractor, and so I know I provided that to Dan in the form of the brochure.
Okay, brochure.
But of course, physical versions are usually much better since that would be what's actually up on the area. So, I'll go ahead and pass these out to you so you can take a look.
Do you have a favorite out of those?
Favorite, I suppose would be the clay color. It's very nice.
Okay.
What about the clay?
Do we need to include it into evidence?
We will, we will. At the end.
Taking the clay. So, the initial reasoning for going with the white fence was that it was the cheapest option. I hope that perhaps, given the situation, the contractor would be open to maybe reducing the cost, but with current conditions, he doesn't want to do that. And so, the price differences are actually on the back of them in terms of how much more it costs than white. So, two colors will be costing...the one would cost an additional 5%, and I believe the other two 10%. But I wrote specifically how much more of a percentage it would be per color.
Did they say 15 or 5?
15, let me see.
15.
These are the three options, right?
Right, so this is 15%, this one's 10%, and then this one's 15%. So, the slight 10 would be 10% addition to the current price, and then the 15% for the clay and the gray options.
Okay.
So...
With white being the base.
Right, right.
Yes, yes.
So, since it was expressed that white would be more of a color that isn't appealing, I'm open to going towards a color that's other than that. I would probably lean towards the clay since it does look nicer, it does go with the house as well as the siding. And so, but since it is a bit more expensive, that's something I hope that the board takes into account, that, you know, I'm willing to pay that extra difference to try and appease So, the second thing that I believe was a hurdle was the concern about the fence precedent that it would set. If we were to set that fence there, would other people want to get that? I believe when we talked about that last, there were a mention of maybe one or two or three houses having vinyl fencing already, but at least after driving around, it doesn't seem that there's that many currently. And I've been here since maybe 2004 about, so the course of that timeframe, I haven't seen that many fences coming up that are white vinyl or that many vinyl fences in general that make me think that I would be a trendsetter of any type to have this be the thing that everyone starts doing. So, but on top of that, I think the notion that I am a corner house on a very busy street is one of the big reasons that I want this fence, and I don't think everyone would necessarily fit that limitation or that specificity. And so, I hope that's also taken into account, that this is a special case because of those And then the other point that we talked about was the reduction of the location of the fence from the current position to pushing that in 14 feet along that entire road. So, that's something I did talk about with family, and that got very lively. Specifically, they were hoping if we do that, we'll get any tax breaks. Probably not, I'm imagining.
I'm sorry, what did you say, tax breaks?
Yes, so, from their perspective, that we're essentially putting more of our backyard on the other side of the fence, basically along the road, that it basically wouldn't be part of the property anymore. And so, while that might be some of the perspectives, and obviously, I know that's not true, but the appearance of it is going to look very odd with that much additional land on the other side of the fence. And so, to help give an example of how that would be affecting the property, I did provide an updated drawing with the line where that 14-foot reduction would be. And so, we see a few different things here. Is this a laser plan?
Did you get one?
Yeah, this is...
Yeah.
Here, I'll show you. So, is it the wrong one, Jen?
No, this one.
This one?
That's the wrong one, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But you pointed the other way.
Okay.
So, just the bottom button.
Yeah. Right, so, currently, there's a few lounging areas in the backyard. There's one that's right over here, which wouldn't be affected by this fence reduction, but there are two that would be affected. So, the first one is right here, and there's a patch of trees really close to the fence, and then another set over here on the edge of this little ellipse area. But in the middle, there's a table with four seats, and if we were to push the fence back in, the entire table and all those four seats would basically be on the other side of that fence. If we go further back into the yard near this corner here, we see a lot of different greenery here. This circle right here, right where the laser dive is hovering over, is a massive stump from an old elm tree that got cut down, but this stump is still there. So, that would be one problem where we would have to deal with that if we wanted to move things and make it usable for us. But the more significant one is that here, we have two benches right next to each other, as well as the table and four chairs, where the benches would basically be on the other side of the fence, as well as pretty much half of this table and two chairs would be on the other side of the fence as well. So, with those things in mind, basically, three of the current...or two of the current three lounging areas would pretty much be on the other side of the fence, which isn't really opportunistic. It's not easy to get to if we were to have to go through a fence door to get to those every time we accompany. And so, I think these are things that, to me, prove that moving it that far back is just...it's not feasible. And I understand that that's...that would be the preferred goal for some, to try and do that, to kind of meet in the middle, but if we're losing that many lounging areas, it feels like we're really giving too much.
Are those permanent structures?
They are not, but the areas that they're on, you know, we've flattened out, we've added gravel, we've added mulch, and so those areas have...we put a lot of work into making those areas to be a comfortable area to lounge around in.
So, I had a comment for Director Peterson. So, just to recap, this house was granted a variation to construct a 4-foot cedar fence at the blue line, and that's where the fence is currently. So, the homeowner could rebuild an identical fence in the same location.
That is correct. I believe it was 1988, the original property owner, and I believe it was a family member at the time, if my memory serves correct, applied for the variation for a number of reasons. Number one, the yard is a non-conforming lot. It's only 90 feet in width instead of 100 feet in width. It is on...it's a fairly large lot with 279 feet instead of the 200, so it does meet our minimums lot area. And so, the ZBA at the time looked at the hardship of the non-conforming lot, allowing the usage of it, allowed the placement of the fence to the property line instead of what would have been the typical 25-foot setback, but because they did not do that, they determined to use the northern building line of the house as the setback line, which was 17 feet, so...or a little over 17 feet. And that...but with that granting of that approval, they put the conditions on a 4-foot maximum height along that corner side yard and also materials, either a wood fence or a chain link fence at the time. And part of it, fence was built chain link, part of it was built wood, correct?
Right, right. The parts facing the other neighbor and the back neighbor are both chain link.
So, the question is, is the hardships, the current conditions warrant the allowance of the increase in height and the change of material?
If he wants to put a 6-foot fence, he could. He couldn't just do it at this height, at this point. He could do it where the pink line is.
Where the pink line is, if he wanted to do this, he wouldn't have had to apply for a variation. He could have built that fence by right.
By 6, at 6?
6 feet and the material. There would have been no conditions on material.
Is there a reason need 6 feet versus 4 feet?
Yes, privacy. So, the 6 feet will give us more privacy. The current 4-foot fence, it gives some privacy if you're a short person, but I don't think that it gives that much privacy with the fact that the road is higher already, I think by about 2 feet from where the ground level is. And so, if you think about that in relation to the fence height, it drastically reduces the privacy a lot unless you're maybe 1 to 2 to 3 feet right next to that fence. And so, for me, if I want privacy further into the yard, say by the fire pit area and that middle lounging area, a 6-foot will allow some more privacy for that, as well as the other lounging areas. So, I think with increased traffic over the years, there's going to be more and more cars there at a stoplight, and it's just...it doesn't seem right.
I mean, it's a good point that that road has been elevated.
Right.
So, I see the argument for going with 6 foot as opposed to a 4-foot. The one thing that I think we discussed last time is the keeping with the character of the neighborhood.
Right.
So, that's where the material comes into play.
And I think it was before mentioned that white didn't go with the neighborhood, but the other colors would match better, and I agree with that. I think that's a good point. Now, I'm open to going with those other colors. I think it would be a better fit.
I think also, cars are taller than they used to be, so you see a lot more SUVs, so that's also...you see a little more height of the car, which doesn't help them either. I mean, to me, it's...there's a lot of frontage still between where he's proposing the fence and the street, so it's quite a bit.
Especially that the street jogs here, right? So, yes, that's a strong point.
If we gave him 4 foot there when the street was lower, ask him 6 now, and he can do a white PVC, the fact that he's going back with at least an amendable color seems to be a good compromise. It might be.
Any questions, Janet?
Well, again, I think that the existing variation allowed a fence on the property line because of the fact that it was a lot less obtrusive. You know, cedar or chain link and 4 feet. When you're asking to put a 6-foot vinyl fence on the property line, I think it's just setting a very...I think it's setting a very dangerous visual precedence about allowing 6-foot fences on a property line. If, you know, if it's granted to you, then what would stop the neighbor down the street from asking for the same thing because, you know, and that corridor going to the slough pond is a very open and natural area. So, I just...I don't see...I don't see the hardship in this, and I think that...I think visually, a fence at 6 feet and 152 feet long would definitely change the character of the neighborhood.
So, those are things I have considered, the first being that it would set a precedent, right? But not all houses are on corners. You know, in most of these corners, we have commercial things there. We have liquor stores, gas stations, Walgreens, things like that. So, to have that many houses in a similar situation, I don't think there are enough houses with these circumstances to consider doing this at these corners of route.
Yeah, it wouldn't even have to be a corner lot. It could be, you know, mid-lot, because some of the houses do have their sides facing, you know, busy streets, but I think that that neighborhood specifically is a very natural landscaped area, and a vinyl fence that length and that tall, right on the property line, I just...I don't see the hardship, and I don't see where that would be in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. So, that's just my opinion.
Director Peterson?
Yes.
In the time that I've been on the ZBA, I don't think we've ever visited a variance and amended a variance. Has it happened in your tenure?
In my tenure here, we have not amended an existing variation before. We've never had the question come up. In terms of having a similar partial encroachment into the required corner side yard, we did have a case on Andover a number of years ago, but that was just past the utility easement, and then there was conditions of extensive planting, which came on that person's property. The issue that would arise here is any plantings on the north side of that fence on the Willow Road side would be in the city's right-of-way, and that would probably not be approved as our drainage claims for the city. We don't have a stormwater sewer system in town, so that would be...
But we're not approving that today, the plantings. I mean, there was mention before...
I'm just explaining that the only time we've had something similar, which did have a vinyl fence, it is very, very similar, a partial variation was granted with some very strict conditions.
And this...the variance did follow the property, correct?
So...
Even though it might not have showed on the books that the property changed hands?
The property, and I think it stayed the same family. If Michelangelo here wanted to sell the property, the variation would stay with the property. Whoever buys it is benefactor of that existing variation, so this would run with the land.
Thank you.
So, the way the fence sits now, they wouldn't be able to landscape on the outside of it?
Correct. Without approval from the city's engineer.
Okay. I think last time, we talked, we were talking about leaving it a few feet off the property line and allowing some landscaping to go through it to provide some coverage. Is that still an option for you?
I think it could be an option to move it in a little bit, but one of the things I pointed out here was that there, on the back corner lot of lounging areas, there's this massive stump. It would cost a couple thousand to bury that or to dig that up so that the fence can go there.
So, is this...how is existing fence going over that stump?
The current fence is basically half a foot to a foot away from that stump, so it wasn't an issue.
Okay.
Because initially, the tree that was there was a 120-year-old elm tree or something like that, and the fence was built when it was still alive. And since then, it was...wasn't in the way, but then when it got brought down, the stump still stayed there.
So, the variance for the side yard setback is still valid with the property? I mean, instead of the 25 feet, he's got the 13.8 feet. And again, I think seating, you still have a very large lat, so you know, your seating could go anywhere in the lat.
I feel a good example would be that if you have to remodel your living room, but they want you to take away maybe, from this example, it would be about 15% of that, would you still want to put your setup the same way? And I don't think it would necessarily work for us that way, just because when we have family, we have a massive number of people. We typically put out volleyball court and have the lounging areas, have things planned for the evenings, and so it just doesn't go with the Feng Shui, so to speak, of how we have the layout set up.
Well, your other option is to stay with the 4-foot fence and put a taller landscaping in for privacy. I mean, then you could keep it at where it is now, and for privacy, you could add additional landscaping, which would probably be similar in cost to a 6-foot fence.
Buying trees that would grow to the height necessary for that ended up being slightly more because we need about, I believe it was 23 or so, trees.
What type of trees are we looking at?
I was looking at spruce trees, fast-borne spruce trees.
Director Peterson, is vinyl an approved material for conforming fence?
Yes, except for the reverse corner side yard. So, any other person coming in for a fence permit, we've got a number of properties in town that have vinyl fences already. Not a lot, but it's a growing trend. I think the fact that it's a low-maintenance type of a product is very appealing to homeowners. So, yeah, it is an approved material.
But wouldn't be an approved material for this fence? If there were no fence and we wanted to put a fence on the red line?
If there was not a condition...
Right.
He could put a vinyl fence in.
Okay.
He could put a 4-foot, you know, if there were no conditions applied to the original variation, this would be a different discussion.
Right.
Would you be amendable to leaving it 3 feet off as you get to that stump, then jog it back out to the lot line?
I think that's something I could work with if that would be fine, to have it go 3 feet down the rest of it, and then, yeah, around that stump.
I do think having some landscaping in front of that fence is...152 feet of just fence, the landscaping is a valid point, what Janet's saying. I think that it is a corridor to the slough and stuff, and your neighbor on the other side of Willow, as you turn Maple, has a pretty long fence, but they also have a similar vinyl fence to what you have, but they do have landscaping on the outside, and it does make it considerably more attractive, so...
Right, they initially wanted the fence, but they considered this process to be too intimidating and too costly, and so that's something that I very much agree with.
Not too intimidating here, so...
Too intimidating, yeah.
I'm also a very stubborn person.
So, I think, I don't know, that's...I would like to see some landscaping in front of the fence. I thought that was a good idea last time, but we...
So, you're proposing this?
So, something else I'd like to mention for Commissioner Seaworth is that they do have another option that I didn't consider, but it is a wood-looking vinyl, but that costs about 40% more. So, while it's very nice, and that would have been the perfect thing for this, it's just way too much.
Yeah, I guess the material isn't so much what's getting me...it's the height as well as the material. I think it's just...and the fact that it's right on the property line, I just...I don't see the hardship there that moves it to the property line, because you have the option of putting up a 6-foot fence at the 13-foot setback line. So, you're already better off than, you know, most people that have the 25-foot setback. And I just...I think it would be...so, one, I don't see the hardship, and two, I just think that it...I think we're opening up a can of worms to allow a 6-foot fence, vinyl fencing on the property line in 152 feet.
I pulled up the exhibit number 6 from the November 20th meeting, that was the petitioner's example of what potentially a green planting would look like, just so for reference.
Right, thank you. Who would approve the landscaping if...
It's similar to what we did on the house on Andover. They would submit with their building permit a planting schedule of what they would plant. So, if I recall correctly, that property had to have a mix of tall, more bush-type, maybe lilac or something that broke up the mass of the 6-foot white.
Well, and that would be built into this if you did build it on the 13-foot setback line, because you said you've got planting on the street side already, so that would break up that expanse of the long fence you've already...
Right, there's some already there, right?
Right, so I mean, I think even if you put it at the 13-foot setback line, you'd still need that additional landscaping that you have in place now.
But not required.
But not required, right? And he wouldn't even need to have the variation for that.
So, in terms of approving landscaping for that, like, is there a certain percentage of coverage we can say?
You could state whatever condition you would in terms of coverage, that is, the property of the ZBA under the conditions portion.
Is that something the building board would be able to enforce?
We do landscaping enforcement for other projects already. I think our perspective is, is when the fence goes up, did he put the garden in, did he comply with the conditions? And then we go on, and then with that particular property, it's not like it's hidden inside of a neighborhood. It's in a very prominent corner that it gets... It's in a very prominent corner that it gets traveled multiple times a day. So it's not like it can get forgotten about. And I would, based on my experience with the applicant, I don't think if that was the route, that he would do anything different than what he got approval for.
So mine are less than two evils. A six-foot fence at twenty, at thirteen feet, or jog back three feet off the property line with landscaping covered in front of it with the clay fence, I'm choosing option two.
How easy do you think it would be to maintain that landscaping on the other side of a six-foot fence? I mean, how do you take care of that?
Similar, I'd put multiple extensions of hoses together if you had to.
So some of the plants I'm thinking of, they, after the first year of maintaining them, planting them, watering them, they pretty much don't require too much care. They, their root systems go so deep that they are able to grab water from below and can maintain themselves.
If I recall, you had been consulting with some folks with the inner seat, correct?
Them as well as extensive Google searching of various types of native plants to the area and plants that wouldn't be detrimental to any underwater sewer systems or things like that.
How tall, how tall are those plants?
Some of them can get up to six feet.
So why don't you just put them in now without the six-foot fence?
Well, if I put them in now, that would probably work for some privacy, but you'd still be able to walk through it. My dog would still be able to walk through the.
Well, again, then you could do your four-foot chain link fence for the security aspect of it.
I would be concerned that a chain link fence would also be taking away from the nature aspect if we see metal instead of vinyl?
Well, I think that's what the original.
The original has chain link on the inside so that it's not apparent to people passing by. They see the cedar fence currently.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about the original variance, I think, said cedar or chain link.
Right, and we chose not to use chain link because it would look weird on that end.
When this, when this original variation was approved, vinyl was not an option for a fence, right? Why would we pick, why was cedar and chain link picked? It's a very drastic difference.
I can't speak to exactly, I don't know specifically, but the likelihood is the vinyl product was not available. If it was, it was very expensive. Additionally, there was readily available material. Also too, at the four feet, you could get it just about anywhere. And fairly easy even for a homeowner to install.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Well, if, if that's your presentation, then we have no other questions. I would go ahead and close the public hearing. And then we will discuss amongst the commissioners. So thank you for your presentation. Can I please have a motion? Oh wait, do we need to include this in?
This will be, this will be given as exhibit eleven. Thank you very much. And after, it's all good, we'll get back to you.
Exhibit eleven is samples. All right, can I, can I please have a motion to close PCBA case number twenty-four dash thirteen V at seven thirty-four?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Seaworth.
Aye.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
Aye.
Commissioner DeGraw.
Aye.
Chairman Kempa.
Aye.
Well, we've, we've given possible compromises. But the, but the case still stands as presented. So we're still, we're still considering, we are still considering a six-foot fence, six-foot vinyl fence at the, at the property line with no compromise.
Well, I think I can put together a motion that would, this is what I think we should do. Allow, come three feet off the property line, require planting that covers fifty percent coverage up to five feet from the oak tree, which then he's allowed to jog back to the property line, to the rear property line, in a six-foot vinyl fence that's in the clay color. That's what I would suggest as an approval.
Make sure we got this right. So it'd be at the three foot in from the property line. Fifty percent of the length of the fence to have landscaping, and then allow the petitioner to move the fence approximately five feet before the trunk back out to the property line in the gray color.
Clay color.
Clay color.
The applicant, would you, is that something that you consider and you would like us to vote on?
Yes, I think that would be a good compromise, and that's something that would be manageable.
Okay, any other suggestions, comments? Okay, so we're doing six-foot vinyl with a jog essentially. Three foot off the property line, five feet before the stump. We come back to the property line and go all the way back.
Correct.
And there is nothing, we're not going back along the backside of the property?
At this point in time, if he, are you planning to take the vinyl and wrap it at the, what would be the east, the northeast corner, that side there?
So it would be cutting off right where the blue line ends or the blue marker?
So the vinyl goes just along that property line, you're going to keep the existing fence that's back there, I think is what the question is, correct?
All right, so we're only basically going along Willow Road?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I need a, I need a motion to accept into the public record the evidence presented this evening, including exhibit number eleven, which is samples of the vinyl fencing.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
Aye.
Commissioner Seaworth.
Aye.
Commissioner DeGraw.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Chairman, Chairman Kempa.
Aye.
So now I need a, I need a motion to recommend to the city council approval of case number twenty-four dash thirteen V, allowing the construction of a fence with the condition that the fence is moved three feet into the yard from the property line and jogs back to the property line five feet before the stump and goes along the property line to the, to the back of the property with, do we include the landscaping?
Fifty percent of the length is what I heard you say.
Fifty percent coverage of landscaping on the part that's jogged off the property line three feet.
So I think up to here.
So.
Yeah, you can't technically landscape without permission, that's that.
That three feet should give you enough to put some native grasses, native plantings in there that break up the massing of vinyl.
Right, and three feet should be plenty of room to throw a lot of that, so I think that would look good.
Yeah, I think it would look good as well.
You're going to write the color into it as well?
Yeah, and it's the clay.
It's a clay, we're going with the clay.
Clay, for the applicant's choice, clay, correct?
Right, clay.
Okay.
All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Seaworth.
No.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner DeGraw.
No.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
Aye.
Chairman Kempa.
Aye.
It's three to two. We will be on the February tenth city council meeting, six thirty PM in this room. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next case is case number twenty-five zero-one SU. This is a typo, it's a.
Elmer's, right? It's Elmer's, my mistake.
So it's case number twenty-five zero-one SU twelve oh nine North Elmer's Road, Unit B of Prospect Heights. It's a special, special use permit for a sit-down restaurant. If there's anybody else who would like to speak, I can swear you in now. Do you swear that your testimony will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. If you could present your case to us, but if you could provide name and address for the record?
Yes, of course, Maria Gonzalez. And the address is twelve oh nine V at North Elmer's Road of Prospect Heights. And we're actually looking to get permission for, to open a Mexican restaurant in this location. So we have here, my summary is, we're going to be representative and the company as an LLC and with the expectation of rapid expansion in the food industry. We've been in the industry over for twenty-five years. So my husband is a chef already in a restaurant, so, I mean, if he's working there for twenty-five years, why not start our own, you know? So with all his experience. So our mission is to provide the warm and friendly services as a, you know, family style restaurant, feeding and for, in a comfortable environment for everyone. So we'll be serving, you know, Mexican food. We're not looking to sell alcohol, so it will be pretty much, you know, just Mexican tacos, burritos, all the goodies. We have, I think you guys should have the menu. We have, we're looking to do personal prices. We have the high school right there, so we are going to be doing some lunch specials for, you know, a few hours during the day. We're also going to be bringing our taco Tuesday, on Tuesdays. And we're going to be doing, you know, some specials, still deciding on exactly what's going to be. But yeah, this is our, hopefully, this is more.
So we have exhibit seven is the plan of the space?
Yes.
So there's essentially only six seating spaces in the place? Okay, so it mostly, mostly carry out?
It will be mostly carry out, yes.
Okay.
Since it's not a big space, we don't want to do like a big, you know, a lot of seating. And we want to do more like a takeout.
For reference, this particular mall suffered a fire in July of twenty-three and just came back on, and there was previously a restaurant in the site that did not come back. So this is a filling the void.
Okay.
Is the restaurant already built out? Or whatever was left of it, or is it fully gutted?
The building was completely gutted, new facades, white boxes. The only, there were four units on the very south end where it used to be hot breads. They've gotten all Spicemantra, the Stella's, and the T-Mobile are, were the only ones that did not get gutted, but they did, had to wait until the rest of the mall was rebuilt to reopen.
Looking at the exhibit three, am I missing thirteen?
Yeah, that was, it's been corrected. It's at the right-hand end is the Stella's. Yeah, if you cut that, is where Stella's. That was provided by the landlord. And when I printed it, he subsequently supplied the one.
You did mention here some of your hours of operation.
Our hours are going to be between, from nine AM to eight thirty PM.
What's an eight? What's in, is it eight vacant, space eight?
There's, there's still.
Eight, explain.
Eight is vacant yet. There's another vacant spot between the salon and the boba tea, which is in for permanent construction now. So there were six businesses that did not come back, and they replenished with three. And then a convenience took, no, you know what that is? That's convenience store took an extra space.
On the vacant?
Yeah, they picked up an extra nine hundred feet.
Oh, good for them.
So they're doing a really good job of with the, trying to re-lease the mall.
It was a, it looks nice. They did a good job renovating that.
I agree.
This looks great. I think the only thing a problem you're going to have is you're not going to have enough seating. I think high school students are going to fill you up pretty quick. That's what I was looking like, if you should go next to a vacant space or if you ever had the room to expand, at least you have the option. It seems like you're kind of, the way they've divided up these tenants, there's no vacant spaces currently next to each other.
Well, Jim Tenali, I'm Maria's architect, and we were asked to help out on this. And working with Dan, we determined that we had limited ability to have some seating because there's only one bathroom. And so with limitations of those facilities, we can't have too many tables and chairs in there. And it really wasn't her plan to have a sit-down restaurant anyway. Your point is all taken, if things go great, maybe, maybe you can expand.
Maybe later on.
Maybe.
I went to high school wheeling, I know we used to frequent the shops there a lot, and we used to eat there a lot, so.
Yeah, I think this will be great for all kids and families in there.
Yeah.
The people, as Dan said, who redid the shopping center, I can see a lot of this stuff, you know? And they did a really nice job rebuilding this.
It looks good.
Things turned out well, you know?
Yeah, it looks good.
What, any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Can I please have a motion to close case number twenty-five zero-one SU at seven forty-seven?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
Aye.
Commissioner DeGraw.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Seaworth.
Aye.
Chairman Kempa.
Aye.
Now, now can I please add any discussion? I think it looks great, I think it's a great project, I think it's nothing but positive.
I totally agree. The previous Mexican restaurant in there, I went frequently, and it was good. And I'm shocked that they're not coming back, so I look forward to seeing a new face over there.
Sounds great. All right, so in that case, can I please have a motion to accept into the public record evidence presented this evening for case number twenty-five zero-one SU?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
Aye.
Commissioner Seaworth.
Aye.
Commissioner DeGraw.
Aye.
Chairman Kempa.
Aye.
February tenth, at six thirty PM, right here.
You didn't approve it yet.
I'm sorry. I got ahead of myself, I'm sorry.
So can I please have a motion to recommend into the city council approval of case number twenty-five zero-one SU at seven forty-eight PM?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Seaworth.
Aye.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
Aye.
Commissioner DeGraw.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Chairman Kempa.
Aye.
Oh, I got this, man. All right, our next case is.
So when is opening?
We actually finished the drawings and hoping to get approval tonight. They're in for a moment, so it's.
What we say is if the tenth goes well, it'll be issued on the thirteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you and good luck.
Good luck.
Have a nice night.
All right, our next case is PCBA case number twenty-five dash zero-two V slash SU. It's a public hearing. The applicant is Prospect Heights Fire District at ten East Kent McDonald. Can I please have a motion to open the public hearing case number twenty-five zero-two at seven fifty?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner DeGraff.
Aye.
Commissioner Seaworth.
Aye.
Chairman Kempa.
Aye. City applicant is here. I can swear you in as well as anybody else who would like to speak to the case. Then that would be a good time to get sworn. Do you swear that your testimony will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
If you could state your name and address for the record and present your case for us, please.
Sure, I'm Jamie Zara, I'm the architect representing the district.
Tru Smith, Fire Chief, Prospect Heights, study, Kent McDonald.
Thank you. Do we, do we need the architect's address? Did I not give that? If she'd like to give it, that would be great.
Sure, one zero six Calendar Court, number one three one in the Grange, Illinois.
Thank you. The floor is yours, yes, please.
Thank you. Thank you for having us tonight. The reason we're here is the headquarters fire station that's very close to you all, so I'm sure you're very familiar with it. We have many hardships, and I'll go through some of them with you. This is the property, so here's an image of it, and I'll just point to a few things that are gonna change. So we're proposing right now to eliminate these parking spaces here and then making this green space. Right now, there's a sidewalk that's not continuous on the site, it jogs here. And we're proposing that it continues straight through just to make it a little easier for pedestrian traffic. And there would be a sidewalk going from the public sidewalk into the, the district building. So one major change is that this is not gonna be the front entrance of the building, because all of the parking is in the rear. And this will be an emergency exit, and if there's an issue where someone drops off a baby, or they end up on the apron because they need an emergency, they can call the district from this door, but the main entrance is going to be on the rear of the building, which is a big change from what is happening now. So this corner of the building right here is an existing office that's not utilized because it's just the conditioning of the interior of the building, HVAC is very uncomfortable, and it's not utilized at all. And it was dispatched at one point, and this building has been renovated several times. So north is the rear of the building, so we're looking at the south. And the west side is where the Walgreens is, and this wall is a quarter of an inch from the property line. So we're proposing not to touch this because we can't, we can't do anything with it penetration-wise or anything. And then we're proposing adding on an additional bay here and then addition that will run north and south, and then addition on the rear of the building. If you have any questions, please also ask them while I'm going through it. So as I stated, we're adding addition on the north side of the building, and the existing north setback line is not conforming, so we're already not within the setback as it is. And we're proposing to align the new addition with the existing north portion of the building. And then the east side, currently, they are within the setback requirements, but we are proposing an addition here that would eliminate the parking. And we would be asking for a variation to the setback, which would be seven foot eight off the property line here. Now, in the front of the building, you can see that dash line that is the setback, so we are bringing an addition to that setback line. But again, the south property, the south portion of the property is not conforming, and it is over the setback line. And obviously, this west side, that's only a quarter of inch of the property, is not conforming and does not, it is not within the required setbacks. So in addition to the two variations that we're requesting, the north and the east, we are also not able to meet the parking requirements on site. So this is a property, it's pretty much all impervious property aside from this area that we're infilling. We're removing this little island here because we, we have to based on the addition. And the area we're infilling will be slightly more pervious area. But aside from that, it's all asphalt and building. So back here is the parking that is owned by the district. This property line here, everything is owned by the city. So the parking is utilized right now by the district, but it is not owned by the district. So based on the code, we're required to have twenty-seven spaces. We only have twenty, we only have nine on the property based on this modification. The district requires fifteen based on staffing and their training room and the requirements of the building. So the discrepancy is eighteen spaces. And what we actually need is based on what the district's requirement is, six. I know that doesn't matter to you guys, but just so you know that the eighteen spaces is the code requirement and not the district's requirement. So currently, the district is working with the city on a parking agreement to try to figure out how we're going to make up for that variation. So I want to mention, there's a lot of hardships on the site, not only because it's a tight site, because there are other code requirements of the bone max. So OSHA requires decontamination spaces in fire buildings, and we do not have any. So when I showed the planning, I have looked at it, there are no separations between living spaces and apparatus spaces. So all of the contaminants on apparatus can easily be in the living spaces, which is an issue with a lot of departments and districts right now with cancer and, and other concerns. So it's a safety issue, and it's also a code requirement. They currently don't have a training facility, there's no good locker room, the gear is all on the apparatus. There's an odd amount of stairs in this building. There's stairs that we're going to try to clean up and make this a little bit more of a safer, more sufficient space, because obviously response times are important, and having four stairs here, four stairs there does not help with response time.
Where do the stairs go to?
They, it's so strange. When they did another renovation, they added a few stairs and they added a basement, so I don't know if that's why. We can't really figure out why they added stairs, but there's four stairs in certain areas. I don't know that they can even answer one of the stairs were added. So we're trying to eliminate that because obviously that doesn't help with response times. The bunk rooms aren't insufficient, there's limited office space, and there's definitely not enough storage. So the existing station is nine thousand ninety, nine, sorry, nine thousand nine hundred eighty-one square feet, and the proposed station is thirteen thousand eight hundred thirty-five square feet. And the apparatus space is just about fifty-five hundred square feet of that. So this is the landscape plan, which is very similar. I mean, as I said, it's, sorry, the space that we're going to be landscaping is this. This is about the only area where we have impervious, or pervious service. Everything else is either, this is all asphalt, and obviously the, the apron is concrete. And this is the existing drive that is not owned by the district that would be maintained. So as I stated, this is the existing apparatus. And currently, you walk from the kitchen and all of the spaces right onto the base. So we've created a separation here, there's corridors that separate the spaces, and there's a, a living area here that has individual bunkers. So there's no concern with male and female that are all separated. There's a locker room here that would facilitate any changing or taking the clothes into the bunk rooms or the single user restrooms. So everything is unisex. We added some offices to the front of the building, and as I mentioned, the entrance to the building is on the rear. This is where we have a training room, which is public space that can be utilized, but obviously would be used by the district too for training. And there's a restroom here, and this area can be closed off, so if the public did need to utilize it, they wouldn't be able to get into the rest of the building. And then we added administrative space here, because again, all the parking is going to be back here. And we added some, the other spaces that are required by OSHA. There's clean and dirty laundry, so dirty laundry would be all the apparatus gear laundry, that's over in this area. Any of the clean laundry would be linens and things that the firefighters use in the, on the living quarters side and not contaminated. We have a decontamination shower, so that if there is something that happens when they come back from a, a site, they can clean off out here and get rid of their gear immediately and not bring it back into living quarters. There's a space for gear, and then there's a battalion chief vehicle, and there is a battalion chief sort of quarters on this side that's separated from the other living quarters. And then the always the kitchen and the dayroom that are used for daily use. So there's a set of stairs that is not exactly in this location, but we're, we're leaving those. And we recreated a ramp here to remove the other stairs that they have. This is an existing staircase into the lower level, and so is this, and those two will remain. So there's going to be an exit here that would be for the firefighters, and then a public entrance that would be over here. So this would be their patio area where they'd be grilling and cooking out and enjoying outdoors in this space. And then this would be the door, in a similar area to what it is now, that would be emergency exit for if there's some sort of emergency with the public, this is where they can utilize that door. So these are the proposed elevations. We ended up removing, change my, there we go. We ended up removing this corner and pushed it back a little bit, so that does help a little bit with our hardship that we have from that existing setback. And then this is the new door, the apparatus door. It's a smaller door slightly from the existing. And then this would be the renovation, there would be a mezzanine space for storage above that area. And then this is the landscape that we're proposing in the sidewalk that'll continue through the site. So this shows the east side of the building. We're trying to blend the materials of the existing. We're, we're leaving the existing brick as is, and then we're utilizing fiber cement board, which I have some of these materials here. If you wanna pass these around. So this is the fiber cement siding that we're planning on using, the bone color and then the darker color that you can see on the, these two elevations. And then this area here is a cutout for a trash enclosure. So there'll be fencing here, and then that's where the trash will be. So this is the north side of the building, and this would be the main entrance here. We use a little different, it's still a fiber cement, but these are panels just to help with weight finding in the entrance, and there's a canopy here. And then, I did not mention the canopy. There is a canopy on the front of the building that will also have the signage on it, and then nine, which is the station upper, and then that would be backlit. And then this sign is also just for weight finding, so it continues slightly around the corner, and it just says public entry, and there's some signage guided. So this is the existing generator and transformer, those will remain. Right now, there's a big storage crate that's going to be removed, and then that area will be where the patio is. So essentially, the storage that's outside will now be inside because we'll have space for it. And this existing fencing is there, and that will remain. So this would end up being the patio that's utilized, and as I mentioned, this is the main entrance down.
Isn't that where the antenna is now?
Yes, this is where the antenna is, in this fencing, yeah.
So is that where your patio is?
There's about a point with space between the existing wall of the fire station and the enclosure for the cell tower.
But that, the fencing around it will remain.
Yeah.
And then this is the west elevation, that's the quarter of the issue of the property land, that's the Walgreens elevation, and that is not going to change. And based on code, we cannot shop it, we can't do any penetrations or, or adjust anything, so that will stay as is. So again, these are the materials we're using, this fiber cement planks, different colors, the existing brick, and then trying to match the existing brick. And then this would be the color of that entrance panel, and then the existing placing and framing would be that darker anodized bronze. And that's all I have, so if you have any questions?
I had a couple comments, just to add a little historical, those I may already know. You recall that there was a strip mall at that location before the Walgreens was built? The fire station was actually, the original fire station was built by the volunteer firemen in nineteen forty-eight. When I say built, they actually built the, the building, there was no contractor, it was the firefighters. And then the strip mall was added, the Smith and Dawson Development. In nineteen seventy-one, they built the first addition, they gave the fire station its look now, and that addition was primarily the three-bay garage that you see on the front of the building. And in nineteen ninety-one, we added a small addition off the rear, because we had made a transition from being a truly volunteer fire department to having a small crew on duty. The juncture that we're at now is for several years, we've had a larger crew, a six-person crew on duty in that building, and we really don't have the facilities for a six-person crew. And we don't have sufficient built facilities should our workforce become diverse and represent multiple genders. We also are amazed to have made it through the COVID pandemic with those six firefighters sleeping in the same room, breathing the same non-circulating air. So we're trying to maybe to like bring this into perspective. Two more pieces of perspective that I'd like to share is that Jamie mentioned that the existing building, just under ten thousand square feet, and we're proposing to build in the thirteen thousand square feet area. Most fire departments that are building a brand new headquarters station are building those buildings in the twenty-five to thirty thousand square foot range, and the substations, the secondary stations, are being built in the fifteen thousand square foot range. So we're proposing an expansion of our headquarters station that'll keep that building smaller than the average substation of a, of all area departments. And then the last piece of perspective is, we have nowhere to go. The Long Grove Fire Department is currently trying to move their headquarters fire station from downtown Long Grove out onto Elmhurst, not Elmhurst, Round eighty-three. And they estimated originally that that project was gonna cost them fifteen million dollars, and they're five million dollars over budget already. Our original estimates for our original vision, we're gonna place this project well over ten to twelve million dollars. Our taxpayers approved a ten million dollar bond two years ago. We wanna be good stewards of that money. We allocated six million dollars for this project, and it's gonna be extremely tight if we, to get it to six million dollars. We, we can't move, it would cost us a million dollars to buy land, if we could find land, we could have a giant NIMBY problem. Nobody wants you to build a fire station next to their house. So we're trying to be good stewards, we're trying to make a fire station that serves the community. It also serves our members because they have a choice. They can vote at their feet and go work for somebody else, and we wanted to stay working in Prospect Heights. So, thank you.
I, I have two questions for the, for the floor plan. Is it a problem that you're eliminating those overhead doors in the back?
No, we don't go through the building, everything gets backed in.
I mean, through the front doors only?
So you're not. Currently, we do have the battalion chief vehicle going down the back door, but that's why we're proposing that smaller bay.
And then the other comment is just, I think it's gonna be a trick to get the public to go to the back? I mean, for signage, you, you've got something, if you're coming, if you're gonna be going west, you could see the sign that says entry. But, I mean, you might wanna just consider like a freestanding sign or monument sign in the front or something.
We may do that, I don't know if we want it to be a full monument sign, but yes, we may do that. But also, there won't be any parking in the front, so I think naturally.
No parking in the front or on the side, only parking will be in the rear, so.
We can.
And who's using the parking now? Is it primarily just staff and then for special training, or?
So currently, we don't conduct any special training because we don't have a classroom to do that. We need, we need that space. We also need it for our board meetings, so. The board of trustees makes in the conference room, there's exactly ten seats at the table. We put five trustees, the fire chief, the deputy chief, and the, the fire district attorney in there, and there's one spare seat in the, in the room. So we have had some members of the public show up occasionally, and we have to like put folding chairs against the wall, and really not, well, to find a space for that. So we really wanna have this room. The other, the other thing about the building is that, given its size, there's only six people on duty. So when you look at this diagram, and you see on the left side, you see the kitchen and the lounge area, and then in the middle, you see the bedrooms. Given all that square footage, the six people can only be in the kitchen, the lounge, or the bunk room. It's not like there's six people in the kitchen, six people in the lounge. So from the parking perspective, that's why we, we only need fifteen spots. There's six firefighters on duty. The next morning, it'll be six firefighters coming on duty, there's that one hour-ish time period where all twelve of them are together. And then after that, the deputy chief, myself, and maybe one or two other cars are in the parking lot. So the twenty-seven is the calculation, but the practical effect, it's really only about fifteen spots that we need at any given time.
Unless you're doing a training.
Yeah, and we've had some discussion, a good discussion with Dan and with the police chief, and they have a legal parking challenge, and we're trying to work out. And they have a local parking challenge, and we're trying to work out. Well, we're going to work out. It's not yet. It's, we're going to work out a parking plan that's going to benefit not only the fire district, but the police department as well.
Who owns this pavement now?
That's a public, public access alley to serve, to serve the PD, serve the fire department. The police department, which is the property to the east, if they come in, their parking area behind the station dead ends. So they have to turn on the clock. So they basically have a one-way in on the next driveway over. And this functions as a two-way currently, primarily it'll be going in.
So this property north of the fire station, that's also owned by the city?
Correct, yeah.
This area here, can you talk to me?
Yeah.
You're talking about here?
Yes.
Yes. Historically, that was owned by the fire department in 1991. We built that addition in 91. The strip mall, Walgreens hadn't been built yet, and the strip mall was still there. And there was a regular property line behind the existing fire station and the strip mall. And we did a little horse trade with the city back then to square off the two boundaries, the city owned the strip mall. So we traded that up to make a square lies. Probably not a good idea in hindsight, which is always 2020. But that was historically a fire district property.
So who uses that space now?
Police use it for overflow parking, training when they have any hazmat or MCAT or any special people that come in. They use that space because it is a very busy space. The city has been talking about an issue to try and better utilize land and is there ways to expand parking over there. And that's what we've committed to the city engineer to come in and do some evaluations to see how we could maximize space and parking for both. But there are times when if the PD's doing training or if they have a special detail because of an incident where that lot packs up. I know the fire district at times occasionally has done some hose layout and some things. But, and we've had a really good working relationship with the district over time. And it's not that it's a confrontational type issue. It's just trying to make sure that spaces can be, benefit both parties.
How many handicap spots are there or will be? How many are there now?
One.
One. The one in front?
There's one on the, it's on the side. Sorry, I keep doing this. Right here, there's one currently, but this will be removed. So then we're proposing this one. And another reason I didn't mention that we're moving these spaces is because they're dangerous. Pulling in and out of here right onto Camp McDonald's is, it's a sightline issue, and it's a little dangerous. So that's another reason why we're eliminating those two spaces.
So one quick question regarding, I think you mentioned that on the east side of the building, you will have trash in there?
Yes.
Is there enough, where's the trash now?
It's in a, basically a parking spot.
And can a, can a, I guess, the garbage, this is public access, right? So the, okay.
These are wheeled too. They're not like the really big, they're wheeled so they'd be, I'm assuming they would pull out and.
They're like residential type?
No, they're.
So like a three-yard?
Yes.
Ones that are wheeled, I don't know, they just roll out?
Business.
Okay. And how tall, excuse me, how tall is the existing building? And how tall would the addition be?
We are under, I believe this side is 30 feet. Where, I think I have it on the drawings, but I don't know that I know what it is right now.
Eighteen feet, eighteen feet is the existing building. New building's 28 feet, 26 feet.
Okay.
And then the rear would align with the existing.
And the purpose of the height on the addition is for the mezzanine for additional storage?
So we get rid of that crate outside.
I think it adds a very pleasant visual element as well, but, yes. What else did I want to ask? So even with the, with the big doors in the back, they're not being utilized at this time. So basically, the big fire trucks don't go through the back of the building?
They don't.
Okay.
They all, all the trucks go out the front.
Okay.
There's the turning radius. If you were to try to drive out of the back and make that turn, you can't make that turn. You'd have to.
Okay.
Adjust multiple times. We don't want that. It's a safety hazard, something's going to hit somebody or something.
As far as the, as far as the back of the, so if we look on the, on the larger plat of survey, the other properties come, like Walgreens and the police station, they come much closer to the neighboring residential area. So this must be because the city owns this.
The alleyway to the north that goes almost up to the fence is the city fence on that property line, which is the alleyway. And then it's the residential there. The way that the plat is for the police department actually goes, and we actually own Maple and go to the 15-foot on the east side of Maple right away is the police lot. How that was ever plotted, I can't answer to, but that's what we're living with.
So that is a good point. If this property was not sold up here, we would be within the red setbacks. The reason we're not is because we are pulling the setback line from that property line right there, that division.
Make an offer.
We get it in there, Elmer.
So with the, with the, with the rear of the building being the public parking lot, is there, is there requirements for additional light? Or are there any provisions being considered for that?
Well, we will have lighting on the building. We've not discussed parking lot lighting. But we also have to abide by the city's photometric requirements, which is zero lot line. So we can't have any lighting at the lot lines. So we just have to be diligent about that. So right now, we're proposing on the building.
I would anticipate that it would be dark almost every night because we close our, we close for business at four o'clock. So we don't have, you know, if people occasionally came at night, the lights would come on, but it's not like there'd be lights burning. You know, we have three small lights, one over each overhead door in the back that go off. Not during a time when they go off, probably around 10 or 11 o'clock at night, I believe.
Be the bare minimum, probably the bare minimum lighting required for man doors and safety and access, which is minimal for candles.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for your time.
I think project looks, building looks nice, at least in the pictures.
Some people that want to testify.
By the way, how did you stay in business with all those OSHA?
We were very challenged during COVID. We had two firefighters who acquired COVID at the same time. Both of them acquired along COVID, or one was off seven months, the other was off nine months. It was a period of time where we had 30% of our workforce out ill or injured. And that went on not just through the excitement after COVID, not COVID services, but injuries. So we recovered from that, we're in the process of hiring our three firefighters for our three vacancies that we had. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anybody else that would like to speak?
Don't worry, I'll see you again, it's kind of long.
It has been.
So yeah, I think.
If you could state your name and address.
Scott Lee Moore, 90's Clarendon, Prospect Heights. I filled out a, I think I was, as well.
Thank you.
So I think cosmatically, I think it looks great. Colors look very inviting. And my property, just for those that don't know, is actually right behind the fire station. So, and our house is elevated, so I get a view down into the fire station. So the current fire station, as the chief had said, there are three lights that are on there. And they are kind of angled down a little bit, but if they are bright enough where we could actually see if I have our curtains open, the light does splash, we'd be able to see it internal, in our interior home. It's not the worst thing, we're kind of used to it. But with this new proposal, I would like to suggest that lighting definitely be taken in consideration. Those lights don't go off at 8:00 PM, they're on all night long. So I don't know if that's just a misunderstanding, but those lights do go on at all hours. With the main entrance moving to, I guess this would be the north elevation. This is what I would see from my backyard. And again, my house is elevated a little bit, so I can kind of see down. I don't anticipate that there's going to be a lot of activity or a lot of noise or anything else like that. They've been very good stewards as far as like, you know, sometimes they have the lifts go up and that, but that's just kind of the part for the course when you live behind a fire station. But, let's see here. I would suggest that if we can put some type of note in where the lighting is taken in consideration so that we don't get that splash into our backyard. It's mostly in the winter time because in the summertime, I did re-landscape the majority of the backyard. But in the summertime, the not all conifer trees or evergreen trees or something, so you do see that. And then I think that if there was to be pole lighting such like "Dolly for you" or whatever like that, I think that that would be something that would be a nuisance, you know, from our backyard standpoint. I thought that it might be something, if we can do it, right now, there's about a nine-foot fence. And I just learned, I believe that the fire station owns that nine-foot fence. It's just kind of like a cheap fence, but it's a decent fence. If there was a way that we can maybe extend that higher to 12-plus feet or whatever, that would basically eliminate our view or the privacy of people that are parking into there to be able to see into our backyard. I doubt that people are going to park and then look, say, "Hey, what's over there?" But at the end of the day, it would be a lot nicer if we weren't able to see the people going in and out of the, of the fire station now that they're moving the main entrance from the front into the back. So I would, would see if we can make note of that and see if that's something that would get happen to extend that fence.
That's a prospect, it's clear.
On the second topic, but still regarding the fire department, you know, we had that tower debate that was pretty, pretty, it lasted a couple hours or a couple years through 2018, 2020. Was a decision being made in 2020 that it was going to be, the tower was going to be encompassing. Nothing happened for five years. I thought it was kind of a dead deal. And now that I'm seeing that that's being built up again, I was under the impression that if they weren't able to move on it within a year or so, then it would be void and it would kind of go back. I could be wrong on that, but at that point, it was deemed a safety issue and for additional funding for equipment. And that was five years ago. 2004, or 2000 is when they actually decided that these new plans were going to be acceptable to the board. And now I'm seeing a monstrosity that's going to go up there. I think it's going to be an eyesore. So I'm not sure if that's where that's at. If Dan, if you're, if you're involved in.
I can fill you in on that.
Okay, maybe we'll, maybe we'll keep that for.
I'll do an update of existing projects or former projects because that just came, it's been always there. It's just they finally were able to figure out how to make it work.
Right.
So I'll give an update here after the close of this particular public area.
Okay, sounds good. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So to clear, I was, I kind of didn't get, my original, so I did have a question. I saw something in the document that you wanted to buy a property. I didn't, I didn't know which property it was, so I was confused. That's why I asked about the light, because I figured that there would be lights in between the parking spaces, but they can't be because they will be on the property line. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And we weren't, we weren't proposing any lighting in the parking lot, just on the building.
No, no, I just.
And the lighting you're proposing, from what I understand, it would be motion activated lights that would just light a doorway?
I don't think they would be motion activated. I think they would be silver, I would assume, like self-activated, so they would go on based on when it's dark.
Photometrics? Photometric?
They're, I think they're called cell lighting. Now, photometrics would be the, around the property, you would see where the folk handles are.
No, but the type of control would be a photometric control as opposed to, or a timer. Those are the two options, or you do motion.
So if we use this north example, the code requires that little man door between where the generator and that equipment is on to the right-hand side. You see the little man door, it looks like a box over that. That's a code-required light that can be shielded, downgrade, so it's to protect the entrance to there.
And the canopy would have cans in it, would be down.
It appears, because I don't see on this rendering that any, the lighting is up into the canopy above that doorway. Is that an overhang over that door? Is that a foot?
Yes, that's on, yes.
And therefore, you don't see a light box there. So in looking at these from a code perspective, the lighting would have to have been recessed. So it'll all be down pointed with the elimination of the bay doors in the back. You don't have any other need for additional wall lighting at this point in time unless there was a potential for a safety issue of a parking lot, which the code then does allow for some additional lighting to be added. It would then have to be so it does not become obtrusive and meet all our other lighting standards. Did I make a good assessment of what I saw?
Mm-hmm.
So back to a photo cell is what I meant to say?
Yes.
You had a photo cell would defeat what Mr. Leeho was saying, that then that would actually turn on at night?
Shut off, so we want timed.
You'd either want timed lights, so ideally, you were, you're closed at four, so you really don't need like just the two man doors. So those should be, would those lights be on? Is there a need to have those lights on when you're closed?
No.
No.
I think the light comes on if there's motion detection, you know, like somebody shows up at the door.
Okay.
And if there was motion detection, that the light would come on, that would be, you know, that would be nice.
I would think we could.
Is there code?
The man doors have to have either a motion sensor or be permanently, because it's like, it's a safety issue. It's a trip hazard issue. It also allows people from the inside to see who's approaching the building and gives a view of the outside. So they are required. There's no not happening, it's figuring out how they're the least impactful, at least.
So motion would be probably.
Could be, motion could be. There's a lot, there's a few options. I think that this particular rendering did a good job of eliminating the bulk of what the lighting issues could have been.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think you'll have more light from within, coming through the windows potentially, depending on if you have coverage or not. And if we have a couple downlights by the canopy and then one man light by that one man door, down facing.
The wall caps are down.
They're just straight down, correct.
And then the second item that Mr. Leeho has brought up is the fence height. But that fence is owned by the city, not the fire station, so.
So the fence is owned by the city. We do the maintenance. We actually spent quite a bit of money a couple of years ago and replaced it because it needed it. It is on top of the curb height, so we, we use that as grade point to maximize the full amount. And the code height that the fence code requires is what that fence is built to the maximum amount. So could there be a potential request otherwise? But right now, the fence meets the current code. We maximized every inch we could get by the existing grade that was out there. So instead of using the driveway grade, we use the top curb instead of.
That's an eight-foot fence?
But.
It's an eight-foot.
It's a, because it fluctuates a little bit, it's a, it's, I think, from top curb to top of fence is almost nine.
Yeah, I think that fence to, to cover the backyard, you're going to be sectioned off, and you'd have a lower point than a high point. It might not be aesthetically pleasing at that point. It's just a long fence.
And right now, the way the code is written, it's not permissible, it's not, that it's not worth a discussion point. It's not that it's, it doesn't meet the standards of the code, but I'm sure a discussion could be had if, you know, the council wanted to go that way. But right now, that's not what they're asking for. And it's something we would have to do, not the fire district.
And I think that it actually.
Can I have you come up to the microphone? Thank you.
And after this is done, if it's, if it's fine, it's fine. But maybe if there is light that is intrusive or something like that. And after this is done, if it's fine, it's fine, but maybe if there is light that is intrusive or something like that, then maybe we can have the conversation at that point.
Yeah.
Fair?
Yeah. I have a, just to clarify, sorry, Janet, just a clarifying question for the applicant, so we have two variation requests for setbacks, and I can see the east, and I understand the east, where the required is fifteen, the actual right now is twenty-seven, ten, and the proposed is seven, eight. But the north is I don't get, it's required is fifty, actual is forty-five, eleven, and the proposed is forty-five, eleven.
So the actual is existing, so this right here is the existing building, and this is the forty-five.
Oh, because we're extending the line, got it, okay, stupid me, okay, I apologize, I should have.
It's non-reforming right now, and we're asking for variation.
Right, right, I understand, sorry, I missed that, okay, thank you. And so the only other question that I have is for Director Peterson, could you explain the parking spaces?
The applicant did a good job of explaining it, based on the code, twenty-seven required, because it's a three per thousand for the office and housing quarters. The bays don't count in that equation, so when you look at a pure numbers, thinking that there's staff changeover, there's, could be multiple if you have any type of training or things that typically go on with a fire station use. However, because of the conditions of the property, it never had really that much unless they still own that piece, it wouldn't be an issue. They would be closer to code compliance, but they'd at least meet their staffing demands. Also, so the fire chief had sent a letter to the city manager requesting a shared parking agreement for that space to accommodate their needs. We just couldn't commit fully to a full, we're willing to work with them, allow them to use them while they need, because the demands of the police department are somewhat non-consistent, you know, they have a few other mandates and that's our only facility, so what we have done is expended, the council has agreed to expend some money to have our city engineer do a parking analysis of options. And we're going to work with the district to make sure that we work out so that our needs are not met, theirs are met for their staffing requirements. The property as it sits, can't handle, they were non-compliant to begin with.
So, can we put that in the, in the vote that it's pending, results of the investigation?
We can do that, a pending agreement between the city and the fire district to address the parking will be reached.
Okay, sounds great. I have no other questions. Thank you. If the commissioners have no other questions, then I would please request a motion to close public hearing case number twenty-five zero-two S U slash V.
I'll make that motion.
And that's at, I'm sorry, that's at eight thirty-three.
I'll make that motion.
We got one.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Okay, Commissioner DeGraff.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
Aye.
Commissioner Seaworth.
Aye.
Chairman Kempa.
Aye.
Can I please have any other comments from the commissioner, any discussions that we need to have?
I think we just add the stipulation where lighting needs to be downlighting on the building. And I think that they're amenable to that and controlled by motion, or not on all the time.
Is that per code?
It'll be code required, but those non-essential lights will have a way to turn off. If there's, you know, we have to take a look at, there may be one or even the downlights at the main entrance may have to be on, okay?
I think if they're downlights, they, it's almost better if they're on all the time at least, they don't flicker. If they're down.
Unless, after downlights, I'm pretty sure they'll, they won't bother the neighbors, as long as they stay downlights, but if.
I think that man door on the, what would be the west side, that could be something that's on either a motion sensor or a timer.
And that door is being used by the firefighters?
Yes. So one of these is a stair egress, so there's a, so there's this door, and then there's the door that's off the living quarters, and then this is an existing stair door.
There is a third door.
Yes.
So let's make the two man doors, downlights on motion, and then the canopy lights down, can lights, they're just down to the canopy, those can stay.
That's the design there.
Yeah.
The, the one that concerned the most is, should something go down, someone has to leave and that outside light is not on, and there's something in the way of that door or something like that, so that's the reason why lights are necessary. But there are code options that we can work around to make that work. And we'll take into account in the minutes, we'll reflect that Mr. Leehor will protect from glare, we'll try and do the things to limit the impact of the lighting.
Okay, and the second condition would be the parking agreement between the city and the fire department. All right, where are we? Okay, I need a, need a motion, please, to accept into the public record the, we have new exhibits, do we have any exhibits? Okay, so they accept into the public record the testimony presented this evening at eight thirty-six.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Commissioner Seaworth.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner DeGraff.
Aye.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
Aye.
Chairman Kempa.
Aye.
Okay, now I would like a motion to recommend to the city council approval of case number twenty-five zero-two S U slash V. Do I need to do all, can I do them all at the same time or all separate?
You can, in this particular case, because they're the rear yard and side yard setbacks, you can do a little.
And parking also.
Yep, and parking should be separate.
Okay. So, motion to recommend to the city council approval of case twenty-five zero-two S U slash V for the variation request to reduce the fifty-yard setback down to forty-five, forty-five yard, forty-five feet, I'm sorry, fifty-foot setback to forty-five feet, eleven inches on the north of the building, and reduce the east setback from fifteen feet to seven feet, eight inches on the, on the east of the building.
I'll make that.
Second, please.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
Aye.
Commissioner Seaworth.
Aye.
Commissioner DeGraff.
Aye.
Chairman Kempa.
Aye.
Now, can I please have a motion to recommend to the city council approval of case twenty-five zero-two S U slash V for the reduction of the required parking spaces from.
Twenty-seven.
From twenty-seven to.
Nine.
Nine. With the, I'll put the conditions in this for, since it's the, it's the rear of the building, with the condition that the light in the, on the north elevation of the building be kept at minimum required to prevent glare into the neighboring residential area, as well as a condition for the, the parking agreement, parking agreement between the city of Prospect Heights and the fire department. That motion is at eight thirty-eight P M.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner DeGraff.
Aye.
Commissioner Seaworth.
Aye.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Chairman Kempa.
Aye.
Monday, the tenth, six-thirty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next item is public comments, if we have any. So, since there are no public comments, we'll jump into previous application updates.
There's a couple of ones that are happening right now, the first one is Perry Perry did open about a month and a half ago, and they had their grand opening, and the restaurant's doing extremely well.
Great.
If you get a chance, they've got an absolutely wonderful chicken and rice bowl lunch, and it is a full helping, and one of the nice things about the restaurant, when you dine in, you actually get real silverware and real plateware, not cardboard boxes, not styrofoam, and not plastic. So it's, it's a nice addition, and the price point is right, when they start catching on with the kids, it'll be a big hit at lunch. Secondly, it was brought up tonight, the cell tower at the fire station. And it has had a rough couple of years, however, the applicants have been actively submitting and doing design work and starting the project, and permits have been issued and then have had to stop due to conditions found on the job site. I think we're on start number three or four. They have came to a point now where they're reconstructing part of the existing tower. Originally, they built on the existing tower and an oscillation phenomenon happened that their engineers still can't figure out why, and it was unsafe, caused some issues, then they came back to a pole hardening solution, got into that, and that, as they were doing that and starting to go up, they found some stress fractures in the existing pole, and so that's had to be redesigned. And all those things have taken a little bit of time, they've been in communication with us, and they were able to get everything. And our engineers have looked at every single resubmital to make sure that it meets all the best practices and peer review structures for cell towers. And so they're going up, the, if everybody remembers, the last one that was up for any length of time had the solid shroud around it. It will have a similar shroud, however, it will be perforated this time to try and assist with the oscillation problem that they determined. So basically, from my fixed point, the seventy-two foot mark going up is going to be on the pole, because they've already hardened the bottom half. So it's just, it has been ongoing, you just don't see, always see a lot of it at the time, but they have maintained their approvals through their, it's not like this has just stopped and they've not tried to solve the problems. So that's what you're seeing out there right now, is they're staging and starting to work to take down the existing top subway two and then rebuild from there up.
But they've been able to fix those stress fractures?
No, they're cutting below the stress fractures to where it's already been hardened, and then they've got a system designed that will take the tower up from there. So everything above, they're going below where the fractures, where the stress problems were, and basically building up from there.
But they have to do all this without removing the pole, right?
They've got, the systems have been looked at, the welding, the engineering, there's, there's some, there's some stuff that's being constructed on and around.
They're retrofitting the whole pole.
Yep.
With the new pole, yeah.
Yep. They put, you know, they actually hardened the bottom, then scrapped that, put in the newer base, and they should have put it a hundred percent.
Is part of the reason they're doing that because they don't want to decommission the wireless that's up there right now? To rebuild the whole structure, I mean, I understand your concern, you know, why wouldn't you build a brand-new structure? Because if you had those stress.
It wasn't so much that, if the back of the, for those of you who are on board and the neighbors, they had come in with a whole new tower that was going to be just a massive standard three, four carriers arrays on there, open, and that was, it was totally going to be different, a new tower, a new location on the site, new ground leases, and after many two starts, two different designs, it got approved as, to go back to the mono-pole style on the existing spot, on the existing place. And they were trying to retrofit the existing pole, which was already, what, Tim, twenty-two years or twenty-three years old?
The original was in the nineties, so yeah.
So.
Early two thousands.
So, they got approval from the council, they came in for permit, received proper permits, constructed a structure, and, you know, had problems, they brought it down, and they re-put it up temporarily, make sure that the fire district still had their service, and they had minimal coverage, and now they've come up with the plans to properly do this, and they think, according to all the documents, from what our engineer says, is that it should address, and, you know, the oscillation factor. And the pole will perform as it's designed. So to answer your question, yeah, it seemed like there was large periods of nothing happening, it was the engineering side of the equation, and they were communicating with us to keep the project moving forward.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yeah, if you want, that's fine.
So is there, back then, they would draw up the height and everything else like that, so do we know what it's going to look like?
It's the.
Because the last one looked just like a Coors Light can that was standing in the middle and all that?
Well, that's similar, kind of like I had referred to it as a dream school or a push-up pot, okay? After much debate and a lot of different options that were given, that was the one that was selected to go forward. That is what is still approved, and so it's going to come back as a similar shape, only with the perforation in that.
So it just looked like a, kind of a can.
Just a little cylindrical kind of.
About that little, it's like.
Oh, I know, I know, I.
It's eight feet.
I know the size of it, there's a lot of them on Hens Road, down in the small cell, you'll see small cell repeater stations, mini towers that are going up on utility poles are using the same design with the cylindrical can to hide the antenna array that's inside.
So you want to see the can walls and things like that?
Yep.
What's the height?
The height is what was approved, I think the top of the antenna is a hundred and ten, that hasn't changed, that everything is still within what was the approved.
What's your?
It's a hundred and two, a hundred and three. Well, the original pole with the original antenna was a hundred and two, but they got, it was, because you had the whip on top that brought it up to the hundred and ten. So that's, that's where, that was what was the approved number of the application.
So the canister is going to go up to a hundred and twelve then, or is there still going to be an antenna from?
Oh, the antennas are all going to be inside of that.
They're going to be inside the concealment, whatever they call it, concealment.
And.
That's the plan now, sorry to take up time, concealment spine it's called.
And so it's, the only difference from what was built the last time is it's not going to be that solid, they'll look like someone was crushing it all night at the bomber. You know, it looked like a can head, you know, how it got the dents, this one's going to be a perforated. Well, that oscillation some days up there was pretty intense.
And it'll be painted white, similar to what it is now?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a timeframe?
They started mobilizing.
I was told by the end next week.
It's on the ground right now, it's letting out.
So we issued the permits, they contacted us, got their permits picked up earlier this week, and they figured it was a fourteen-to-twenty-one day construction timeframe, in and out and get back up.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Let's, any other questions?
What about the chickens?
The council is doing some research, they're asking for additional information, and we're providing it to them, but it's right now. They still have time under the ordinance to deliberate on the issue. You'll know the minute.
I know.
Okay, so no decision, basically?
No decision has been made at this time on that, they, as the mayor said during the public, during the meeting, is, you know, the P C B A and the public had over a year of debate on this, and then they've had it for two weeks in a formal package, still really. in a formal package to really do their, their review of the, where they're at, so.
Send it back to us.
Maybe, uh, maybe.
Noted, noted.
Before they sent, before they tried to send it back to us, we forced them to look at all the footage that we've recorded.
Noted.
Okay.
Have the chicken owners go to just one of their houses.
Well, one of the things that was brought up that we did not do is that there, the way that the ordinance passes, you could have a house of a person who didn't want chicken and realistically, as the ordinance was written, every house around it could have up to twenty. So a house could be surrounded by anywhere from eighty to a hundred and twenty chickens and be the only person without chickens. And is that a viable, looking out for the good of the whole community? If they were there and didn't, you know, have chickens, want chickens.
That was one of the limited licenses is, but that still wouldn't stop that potentially.
It, it all depends. There's some things that they're looking at. I don't know what the outcome's gonna be. I don't know where it's at. I've just been asked to give some information.
Lots where, that, we have lots of, we're quarter acre, eight acres, that'd be more concerning. We're so far apart from each other, generally.
Yeah.
That's why.
I'll have, I'll have your five neighbors put up twenty chickens each round here.
So you have dogs.
There will not be a meeting next month. We are, um, do not have an application on file, so enjoy your February. And remember, March is early, um, because of the spring break. We're a week early.
What's the date?
No, we go to the twentieth, no, that was January. We went March nineteenth.
March nineteenth.
I think it's the date.
How much I am.
Okay, uh, any, anything else from the commissioners you wanna talk about? If not, then can I please have a motion to adjourn at eight fifty-one?
I'll make that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.